Are you at the public hearing notice, okay? I won't worry about it.
Michelle sent it over, or you sent it over. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for October 4th, 2022. My name is Carrie Marnik. I'm chair of the planning board. Before we get started this evening, I'd like to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law in July 16, 2022. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows for the planning board to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so public can follow along during deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the lives during the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed in the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I'd like to confirm now that persons anticipated on the agenda or remotely present can be heard. Members, and I call your name, please state an affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Jimmy Protski?
Here.
Willie Milton?
Yeah.
Anthony Zaiden?
Here.
And staff, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brad Lischfield?
Here.
Laurie Connors?
Here.
Ground rules for the meeting, representatives and applicants on the agenda. The chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation. Speaks through application. Participants will write their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to meet their phone or computer and not speaking, and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded and then by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the board or committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For public comment by phone dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please know party or phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click raise hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has the list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes for comments. That concludes announcements for this evening. First on our agenda this evening, we have the public hearing for 317 Crawford Street. Site plan approval for site disturbance of 42,500 square feet of land area. I'd like to read the public hearing notice for this before we get started. In accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM to consider the application for site plan approval in the residential AMV districts, submitted by Vizie, excuse me, Vadim Losko, for a site disturbance of 42,500 square feet of land area for the purposes of construction of a single-family home on the property located 317 Crawford Street, Assessors Map 41 Parcel 1. Pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to ending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during emergency, signed into law in July 16, 2022. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting from a PC, Mac, iPad, iPhone, or Android device. Please click on the URL posted in the agenda. We're joined by phone 1646-876-9923, webinar ID 89577813877, passcode 557156, submitted by Carrie Marnik, our next chair, September 18, 2022, and September 25, 2022. All right, so with that, why don't we get started? If we could bring in the applicant, which let's see here. See, a couple of hands raised. Jimmy, bringing people in as well? So it looks like Mark Arnold. Do I have any others coming in?
Possibly Vito.
I thought I said Vito. There's Vito. Okay. Bring in Vito. Anybody else on the team? Hi, Vito. Anyone else on your team tonight?
This is Mark Arnold with Goddard Consulting. Vadim Losko is with me in the same room, so he's with me here.
Okay. Great.
How are you?
Hello, thanks for joining. Okay, and Vito, anyone else on your side there?
I don't think, I don't think there's anybody else besides Vito, because Vito's the engineer and we submitted, so.
Okay, great. All right, well, thanks for joining us tonight. Would you like to present any materials or walk through your application?
Glad to. So Mark Arnold with Goddard Consultants here on behalf of the applicant for the site plan review application. We're before this committee board for the land disturbance provisions of the regulations in Northborough zoning regulations that were prepared principally because of the issues that were occurring, where sites were clearing large areas over 20,000 square feet but under an acre and causing a lot of erosion and stormwater issues. And I'm going to now share my screen just to walk the board through where we're talking about the property. And so just to give the board a little bit of history, this is a large parcel that was on Crawford Street at 297 Crawford Street, and it was subdivided into several lots. This is the A&R lot we are talking about here. Lot 3 is today's focus. This barn right here is actually gone now, but the pad is still, is still there in the woods. So Lot 3 is the lot that we're talking about here. This is the official number that was given by the assessor's office for this lot, which is again Lot Number 3 here with regards to Vadim Losko for 317 Crawford Street, giving that the number. This is the butters that we have based on the new subdivision. These subdivision lines aren't necessarily on the town's GIS system, but the assessors did work through making sure that all the butters were properly on the certified list that we provided to the administrative board here for the application. So the getting closer to lot, just to give an aerial of where the lot is, it's right in this area here. This is the barn right here, and then this area right here is basically a part of the parcel and is now re-subdivided out. So this is the subject parcel here at 317 Crawford Street. So we submitted this plan and we prepared this plan principally looking at the the section of 7-10-7-9-10, particularly Section 5, which is the question of protecting the site during construction through adequate erosion and sedimentation controls. And that was the principal performance issues of this section of the zoning regulations, principally focused on the fact that we're doing the land disturbance and clearing, and the question of will that disturbance and that work be maintained and controlled during construction? So that way, there's no sediment issues or runoff issues during construction onto buttered properties and also onto the town right of way. So with that in mind, we've prepared an erosion control plan that has multi-phase erosion control measures, temporary measures that are in place during certain construction phases to deal with runoff, so that way during construction sedimentation and erosion is protected and prevented from going onto Crawford Street while allowing the construction to continue. So regardless of if there was a single-family house in a driveway proposed here, we would still have to do these measures just to ensure that we control this, this site from erosion, sedimentation, again, during construction, which is what the zoning regulations actually talks through in a key way. And so it talks about a few things. One is temporary and permanent diversions in the sense of trying to capture water and direct it where it can be either directed away, so it's where it's clean, direct clean water away to keep the site protected, or to capture sediment water and treat it, so that way it's clean and prevented from being sediment, being cloudy and having turbidity when it leaves the property. And so in this situation here, we have a limit of work on the upper portion of the lot to protect the upland forest that's above the lot, so no clearing, no disturbance of trees is occurring above the limit of work. That's an orange construction fence up top to prevent any equipment from navigating beyond the limit of work. And then once you get down below the site, we have erosion controls that come down around the south perimeter. We also have a line that comes in along the slope. Once these slopes get graded out to help break up the slope, this rear slope, once it gets graded out, we have erosion controls placed at the bottom of that to capture sedimentation, prevent it from traveling throughout the site. And then when, when this driveway is gravel, we have gravel water bars to shoot water off to the side into these temporary sediment traps. We have a detail on that on the second sheet of the plan that shows how that's going to be captured, and then we have your standard construction entrance with your deep stone to trap sediment as it's being tracked or as it washes down here. And so these measures again are all designed to be measures that are during construction to protect the, the area, protect the butters, protect the town roads during construction and to provide adequate erosion and sedimentation controls. So we submitted several small waivers to the board. One is the locust map on the site plan wasn't to scale, but I think the information we did submit provides the board enough information to show where the site is and how it works with the proximity to everything. We've, we don't have any endangered species habitat or anything else that is in the area. There's no wetlands on the property. We have erosion control measures to control erosion during disturbance and phasing that out. We've got construction entrance to protect the entrance from any erosion during construction along with proposing to have monitoring of the site during construction. The rest of the waivers I could walk through if that's necessary, but at this point, I think I'd let the board ask any questions.
Great. Okay, board members, at this time, do you have any questions on what's been presented?
So this is just a temporary management of erosion control prior to any type of construction to grade the land, but the amount of land being graded is greater than the 20,000 square feet, correct?
So, so yeah, there is more than 20,000 square feet of disturbance, and, and the measure that we have here are focused specifically on, on Section 5 of Chapter 7-9, which talks about protecting the site during construction through adequate erosion and sedimentation control.
But, and that doesn't have any qualifiers on the amount of land being disturbed?
The qualification to this section is if you're under one acre but over 20,000 square feet, you fall under this section of the zoning regulations. So the zoning regulations were created because people were clearing more than 20,000 square feet but under an acre and causing erosion issues in town. I've dealt with lots where they've had erosion issues because of just grading and not adequate erosion control measures during construction. So this section was prepared in the zoning regulations to help capture sites that have more than 20,000 square feet of disturbance to help them manage the site, so there's not, there's not problems during construction.
Other question. So you are not submitting a stormwater management plan?
So there, there's, 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 there's a, there's a reference in Section 5 to managing runoff from impervious surfaces in that section, but that's underneath the qualification of during construction. So during construction, they're saying you're supposed to manage impervious surfaces. So we believe the controls we have in place will be adequate for those impervious surfaces during construction as well. And so, and, and once the things are stabilized and completed, those impervious surfaces do not require any of the stormwater measures. This is a single-family house and Mast EP has determined that single-family houses are exempt from all their standards. So in the sense of when you build a single-family house and you do not provide stormwater measures under Mast EP, you comply with their standards.
Okay, got it. So you're over 20,000 square feet, but you're not submitting a proposed stormwater management system?
We are, we are not because we don't believe it's necessary to comply.
Okay. Okay. Other board questions?
I mean, there's, there's definitely a significant amount of grading going on. It's actually a very pretty piece of property, but it does look like there's a significant amount of grading that's going to be going on. And I think there is, there is some concern about how things are going to possibly wash off into the road or, or, you know, looking at some of the drainage that you have there, I think there have been some, some concerns about that.
So again, we understand there's a lot of grading. I mean, the, the goal of the grading is to try to create gentle slopes on this property rather than create steeper slopes. That's why the grading has been shown the way it is, to try to provide as much relief as possible to the land around the, the house as it's graded out. Again, we do have erosion controls at the toe of the slope for when the construction starts, and then as this slope is built up, we establish a second set of erosion controls almost about two-thirds of the way up the slope to break up that slope as you go up the slope to create areas of capture and treatment for water, so that way you don't have a concentration of flow. So I looked at this very carefully. I'm a certified professional in erosion, sedimentation control. I've dealt with large properties around the state dealing with erosion. I inspect erosion controls on a weekly basis on large portion, on large sites for, for commissions and private developers. And so I think what we have here is definitely something that's more robust than you would see on a trip, typical individual, single-family lot. Even what I've seen in town, I've seen lots where there are similar disturbance levels without this level of design, and there were problems. And so that's why I did what I did was because I've seen the problems that have happened in town, and I thought about how we could address those in this plan.
Did you submit an existing conditions plan or no?
We did not at this time. I mean, if the commission, if the board needs that, we could definitely provide it. It's, I think the, the existing conditions under the proposed conditions is fairly clear. It's not too difficult, but again, if we, if that's needed, we can provide that.
Okay. Okay, other, any other board questions? I just want to give staff the chance to speak to some of this as well.
I mean, I do think that we have some regulations in place that basically say that there should be a stormwater management criteria on this. And the Mast DEP says you have to do this to meet their standards, but we as a town, I think, have something a little bit stronger in place in order to adapt and customize what we need to our, our environment. Something on a hill is certainly different than something on a downslope, and something on a downslope is different than something on a flat level. So I think that this, this would probably warrant having stormwater management.
Okay, did everybody, Fred, why don't, if you don't mind, you sent a letter. If you wouldn't mind talking to the letter that you sent while we're talking about stormwater management, so we can kind of hear from you a little bit on your perspective as well?
Sure. Good evening. The letter that I put together, I tried to outline where we were coming from when we adopted the bylaw. Mr. Arnold's correct, we were trying to control runoff and sediment and erosion during construction and for clearing of properties who might file, might do some work before filing an application with one of the land use boards. The, the letter points out that under the land clearing application is required in accordance with Section 703050A1D, which triggers a site plan approval. And then you refer to Section 709010 to talk about the the site plan contents for the land clearing permit, the land clearing application. And then in there, it refers to the planning board rules and regulations, and it requires a stormwater management system in accordance with Mast DEP handbook for stormwater. Now, the, the town adopted the bylaw with the expressed intention of controlling runoff, whether it was a single-family house or not, if it exceeded the 20,000 square feet. The site plan contents says it needs to be designed in accordance with the DEP handbook, which does exempt single-family homes and multifamily homes up to three lots. Doesn't, I explained to Mr. Arnold that that may have been confusing, but our intention was that it would need, need to have stormwater management plan submitted with the application and that we would make, take measures to correct that confusion going forward, but it doesn't make sense that we would require something for a single-family home, a land clearing permit, and then allow an exemption in the site plan contents on the stormwater management system that's required. So staff's opinion, and Lori can speak for herself, is that the stormwater management system should be, a plan should be submitted along with this application, and my memo indicates that I recommend that you either deny or allow the applicant to continue and submit that at a later date.
So I could respond to that or wait for the planning agent to go through her comments first?
Yeah, Lori, if you want to shed any additional light on what Fred's explained there, or if you have your own position?
Sure. I absolutely agree with Fred. So the way the planning board rules and regulations pertaining to stormwater management, the way it's articulated is that the stormwater management system needs to be designed in accordance with the DEP requirements. So it doesn't say that, so the exemptions that exist in the DEP regulations don't carry forth to the local regulations because certainly local regulations can be more strict than the DEP regulations. And if you were to look at that section of our zoning bylaws, Section 7-09-010, there are exemptions that are mentioned, including an exemption for clearing and grading in conjunction with construction of a residential buildings or accessory structures if the land area to be cleared or graded is less than 20,000 square feet. So certainly, if, if you have a project such as this that is proposing to clear more than 20,000 square feet, then it would not be privy to the exemption. So if there was an intent to have an exemption for all single-family dwellings, it would have been stated under that specific section under exemptions. So there are also other waivers that the applicant has requested that I have the issue with. So I can go over those now, or we can, we can wait until there's further back and forth discussions?
Okay, so first, board members, any questions for Fred or Lori from what you've heard so far? I can't see anybody, everybody. Okay. So Lori, you have, you've also submitted a, well, actually, I'm sorry. Mark, you wanted to respond to that, so I'll give you that opportunity as well.
Thank you so much. So members of the board, so the, the zoning regulations that Fred brings up, particularly subsection 7 of the planning rules and regulations 7.2-C in his letter, it states that again, proposed stormwater system, which shall be designed in accordance with Mast EP, Stormwater Standard Handbook, Technical Book, as most recently amended, whether or not proposed work falls within the jurisdictions of the Wetlands Protection Act. So that's what, that's what it says. So in that section, there is, there is no reference in that section that the exemptions that Mast EP has put in place are null and void. And, and further on, and there's nowhere in the, the land clearing section or in the site, in the, in the zoning regulations that say that, that, that DEP's regulations are, are all applicable except those exemptions. And, and therefore, I mean, when you look at the, the regulations, particularly in the zoning regulations, there is no standard in the zoning regulations about stormwater in the sense of storm design, size of storms, size of systems, changes in volume or peak flow rates. There's nothing in there that, that's different than what Mast EP already has. They just says, follow Mast EP. When I go to Mast EP, if I follow Mast EP under a single-family house, I make, I, I don't do anything, and that is in compliance with the Mast EP stormwater standards. And so there's nothing there that says anything specifically about that exemption being mentioned. In addition, I mean, although there is, there's a reference to an exemption for under 20,000 square feet, but that, that makes sense. Any project under 20,000 square feet in a town in Northborough that's just doing clearing and grading is exempt from this section. It's an obvious section because that's the applicable. When you, if you're, to be applicable to the section, you have to clear more than 20,000 square feet. So the exemption for, for residential, it, it, it's just a automatic, obvious conclusion. So saying that, because you're over it, now you have to follow DEP stormwater standards, except oh, the exemption doesn't exist when there's nowhere in the regulations that says anywhere that, that exemption is removed. There's not even a reference in the zoning regulations about the exemption being removed for up to three to four residential houses built together. Mast EP says that those are even up to maximum extent practicable. It doesn't even, it says that, that's, it's, it's a caveat. It's not necessarily an exemption, but it's a caveat in saying so we do maximum extent practical for up to four, up to three to four houses. So that's why DEP has, has that exemption. And so I think if, if the board looks at the regulations, particularly looking for the question of where does it say that the exemption that Mast EP has put in place for their standards is, is null and void, it's not there. And so from, from our perspective, that the land clearing section is focused on protecting the site during construction. That's, that was the purpose of these regulations. And although it may not have been contemplated about this unique situation, we've worked hard to not clear more than an acre of land. Rather than disturb more of the site, we've decided to, to try to minimize that where we can, but also provide gentle slopes and, and revile this board. We could, we, we could possibly have spent more money and reduce our work area and not gone before anybody, but instead, we're trying to work with the, with the town, with the board to, to provide something there. And if there's measures that the board feels that we need to implement in small ways, we definitely think we can look at, look into those things. But we just want to make sure that we have something that's, that's, that can be reasonably achieved here, particularly because we don't feel that there is a, a, a standard of completely complying with Mast EP when there's nothing in, in the regulations that say that the exemption that Mast EP has, has issued is, is null and void, and there's nothing else also that has an additional measure beyond what Mast EP says. There's nothing that, again, that says that you need to design for a certain storm or rate. It's, it's just says, follow Mast EP. And when I follow Mast EP, I have an exemption for single-family houses.
Okay, thanks for walking through that. For board members, does everybody have a copy of the rules and regs? Or see in this, see where Fred has outlined the section he's pointing to in the rules and regs?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so you can see in the rules and regs where that is. It looks like number 17 is that particular one. And I think some of these wave, and if you do have this handy, I think some of the waivers apply to other components of the requirement. So why don't we, at this point, take a look at the full list of waivers? I think some may not apply any longer based on the revision. So why don't we spend some time just going through the full list of waivers and just get a sense of where we are for that? So I have the planning directors, questions, comments, and recommendations. Does the applicant have a copy of that as well?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, great. And board members, I assume you guys have copies. So why don't we start with the first waiver request, which looks like ownership of a budding land? So if everybody also has their rules and regs available, you can kind of follow along where we're going here. And feel free to stop me if you have questions. So we have to determine, I guess, one, if we're agreeable to the grant of this waiver. Any particular reason that you want to speak to while you request this waiver?
Mainly because it just, it just, it required additional changes to the plan when we already had information from the assessor's office, from the A&R, which we provided in the application, showing that the lots were subdivided and who actually owns the abutting land around us, particularly those to the sides. So we did provide this plan as well, showing those parcels there, and then the assessor's office providing the butters list. So that's, that's kind of, I mean, again, it, 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 it could be added to the plan if that's a necessary thing, but we thought it was a reasonable waiver in the sense of adding more information to the plan that we didn't think was helpful to help the board review.
Okay, but if I were in a butter and I wanted to attend the hearing and figure out where I'm located, am I able to readily find where my property is on this plan or not necessarily?
I think based on the information submitted, I think it can be, it can be determined. And if there was a butter here that had a question about where they lived, I could definitely point that out to them.
Okay. Okay, the, also, the next part of that is the section 7.2C for a north arrow and locus map at a scale of 1 equals 100, showing the entire project and location and the use of any building thereon within 300 feet of the project boundary. So the, the locus, the erosion control plan has a locus map that's not to scale. Any comment on this one?
So this was, again, we have the A&R plan that shows the locus of the property in regards to everything, and we did submit that showing a good locus and helps the board see that. We provided the ortho also of the original A&R, just helped the, the board understand the locality of the parcel itself. So we felt that that was enough information to help the board see the locus of the site and how it respects the land around it.
Okay, and then also location of the site in relation to groundwater protection overlay district.
We provided orthos for that. It's across the street. It's actually, it's so far, it's actually, yeah, so it's right here. So we provided this locus because it's so far off, you really couldn't show it on the plan itself. So it's, it's in the backside of the properties across the street from this site.
Okay, and then also likewise, in, in relation to the floodplain district?
Yeah, the floodplain, we're over like 800 feet from the nearest floodplain area, which is over on Fisher Street here, the corner of Crawford Street and Fisher Street here. It's just 44 Fisher Street, this property right here. So that's the locus again, so we provided this locus just to zoom out, show where it is versus, otherwise, the plan would have to be zoomed out significantly to show where those are.
Okay, and then partial waiver from 7.2C7, existing and proposed topographical contours of the site. Okay, and then partial waiver from seven point two C seven, existing and proposed topographical contours of the site. So in this case, there was concern about the proposed cuts along the southern property line, if it'll impact the abutter of three eleven Crawford Street, which is not identified in the plan, I guess.
That's this side of the parcel right here. These grades are all cuts, so we're cutting towards our site. So any of this grading actually ensures that runoff stays on our property. It doesn't get directed towards that. So it, we, it balances out to where we keep the water on our site. And you can see here, it's basically a slope where the three eleven actually directs water towards us, and we continue to receive that through these cuts. We don't have grades the other way pushing water that way. So we did provide this additional topography right here, just so you can see how the contours lie.
Okay, so actually, so now I see that because you've showed this, this waiver request no longer is applicable for us. So E is no longer something you're looking for.
Right. Correct.
Okay. So still in play is a waiver from one, A, B, C, and D. Do any board members have any questions up to this point? Okay. Oh wait, and also, so I'm sorry, I'm not, there's more. Okay, also F. Well, there's quite a bit. Okay, we also have F, G, H, and I. So these are, let's see, waivers for nature location and size of all significant existing natural land features, etc. So reasons for this waiver?
So this is a wooded lot. So to survey all the trees over ten inches would be a massive amount of effort to show that the fact is that the site is forested in an upland forest area. So that's, that's why we're asking for the waiver, because we feel like that information isn't, usually that information is provided for more unique circumstances when there's unique grading happening around specific trees or along areas that are more sensitive.
Okay, but you plan to, so the note here is that you plan to clear cut all existing vegetation and regrade within the limit of work.
Correct.
So, okay. So you don't think you need to show the trees over ten inches diameter because I didn't follow that?
So I mean, one is, is it's a to-do survey of the existing trees on the whole site would be a massive amount of information that we really don't think is helpful in looking at what's being proposed here. We are trying to, again, we, as I noted before, we're trying to stay under one acre here to minimize disturbance, and that was a deliberate attempt by the team. And so the, that information, we do have the stone walls, we do have the topography. And if the board needs to see the site, they're welcome to go at the site, and we're glad to do a site walk if they want to see the site and understand how the the area lays out. But I think at this, at this point, we were requesting a waiver just because of the amount of effort it would take and the amount of cost it is. We feel it's not extremely helpful. It could be helpful, but I think it's extremely helpful to understand that the proposed activities here.
Okay, but nor do we have an existing conditions plan. Is that correct?
Just correct, correct. You don't have an existing plan, but, but again, the, the existing conditions is, I think, is pretty clear underneath the proposed conditions here. Cornerstone does a pretty good job, I think, at showing those conditions, the grading, that's the existing grades.
Okay, so then G, the engineering cross-sections of proposed curbs and pavements and vision triangles measured in feet from any proposed curb cut along the street. So Lori, do you want to speak to this one? Because you recommended denying this waiver request.
Yeah, so the reason why, so there is a part of this initial waiver that they have addressed. And then there's a portion that they haven't addressed. So they did a plan revision. And in the revised plan, it now shows a cross-section of the driveway. So we can now see that they're proposing three inches of bituminous pavement over a twelve-inch process gravel base. So that's great. But the other aspect of this requirement was to show vision triangles so that we could see the site distance at the driveway, and they haven't supplied that.
Okay.
And I do think that given the very steep slope of the driveway, approximately fourteen percent, although it does vary, it would be prudent to have the site distance information.
Okay, and so for the applicant, is there any reason you don't want to submit this?
So again, we thought that the, the area, the locality, I think is pretty well-known by Fred. And the fact that we're on Crawford Street here in the section that's very straight, we're actually on the outside of a, of a, of a very, very slight curve here. And so the driveway axis is right here. And so in regards to sightline distance, there's hundreds of feet both directions. It's very obvious. It's very straight. I drove it today. It's straighter than I thought it was. And it, I think from, it's, it's, it's an easy review to have that information. I mean, again, if the board needs that information just to demonstrate that, we can definitely provide that. There's definitely not an issue with the sightline distances here. We just didn't have time to get that onto the plans in an exact form because it's, it's, it's a wide open street. It's a wide open street. We're not on an inside curve where we're worried about sightline distances here.
Okay, Fred, do you? From your perspective?
The, there most likely is the two hundred foot of site distance in each direction that's necessary there. I think the, the more prudent thing to study is the slope of that driveway going in from Crawford Street being a little over fourteen percent at the very beginning of the driveway makes it difficult and could change what the actual site distance is. But the cars, the cars, because the road is fairly a flat curve, then yes, there's more than likely in excess of two hundred feet, which is the minimum that would be required.
Board questions to this point? Okay, let's see. So partial waiver provisions for proposed electric telephone, gas, and cable television. Just a comment of recommending the planning board requires electric telephone and cable television license to be installed below ground. I guess that would be in the event of an approval. Any reasons for this waiver?
So we do have the underground electrical shown on the plan here. And I thought we had meant, I thought that was that the underground electrical was supposed to meant all communications, so cable, everything comes in in this line right here off the pole, like they do. So.
So you no longer need this waiver. This could then be a condition.
I think it can be a condition because that, that, that's our intention is to have all the conduit run in the same location. We don't want to have more than one run from that pole.
Okay, so now we have I. So this is where we get into the stormwater management system. And obviously, there's a comment here, and we talked a little bit about it already. So you, I guess, the primary, the, the bottom line here is that it's the proposed by failing to address stormwater impacts, the proposed development creates a danger to resident health and safety and doesn't meet the decision criteria for approval specified in section seven zero three zero five zero C two B one. And then also, of course, the, the rules and regs in general. So you have expressed your opinion on this. You don't feel you need to supply it. Is there anything else you would add to that? Or do you have a willingness to supply it?
I think, I mean, again, if, if there's, if there's a concern particularly about this, for example, the driveway being steeper, we could look into shallowing it up if we can a little bit to try to, to make that a little softer. We can definitely look at that. If there's a desire for us to try to mitigate some of the stormwater runoff at the entrance of the driveway, again, I think we can look at that at some level of, of reasonableness. I mean, I did talk to Fred about trying to see if we could do at least the one inch of rainstorm and do that for all the impervious surfaces as, be a potential option for the property. And since the first inch of rain is usually the first flush that happens the most often, try to at least get that recharge and try to direct water off to more of a, a, a vegetated area. I think that's something we're amendable to. The thing is, there was no necessary guidelines on, again, in, in the, in the regulations here, as it says, again, it's just to fall, design in accordance with. And so again, I think if the, the board has a concern, and I'd also like just to have, if, if the comment on, particularly the danger to health and safety, if that could be elaborated to, that might help us also address the concerns.
Lori, is there anything that you, that stood out to you? So that's obviously, we're now on site plan criteria, which has nothing to do with DEP. What, anything that stood out to you is?
Sure. So my major concern is driveway with a fourteen percent slope means that during a major storm event, all of the stormwater flow is gonna pretty much go off the driveway into Crawford Street. So it's going to create a slip hazard. And I'm also concerned about other areas because the storm, the way the project is graded is that even in locations that are be drawn, beyond the driveway location, the stormwater is projected to slope, to flow into Crawford Street. I'm concerned about the slip hazard during storm events. And also, the fire department typically doesn't like slopes, driveway slopes of fourteen percent. They're gonna have a difficult time getting their fire apparatus up there. So those two reasons are why I'm concerned about public health and safety.
Okay, was that helpful for you to know, Mark?
That was, and Fred's got a comment, so let, let Fred go, and then I can just elaborate a little bit there.
Fred, did you have something?
I do. I actually spoke to the fire chief today, and he indicated to me that he wanted you to be aware that the fire department cannot service a driveway in excess of fourteen percent. Their vehicles will bottom out. They won't be able to get them up the driveway, and they will need to run up the driveway with hoses as opposed to bringing the truck up the driveway at that grade. And that grade goes consistently right down to Crawford Street, to the gutter. At, it starts a little bit out over fourteen percent, and it gets less as you get up towards the part closest to the garage. It seems like there, we typically have a maximum grade of ten percent for a common driveway. And this is, this, although we have other driveways in town that are steeper than this, but this one is, is pretty exceptionally steep.
Okay, Mark, did you want to speak to that?
No, Fred, that was very helpful. So I guess in the question, in the clarification, Fred, we can definitely look at trying to get the driveway down below fourteen percent. And I, I understand the concern, and, and we do not want to put the, the fire department in, in, in an area where they feel uncomfortable and unsafe to be able to do what they provide to our communities. So we can definitely look at that. And again, if, if, as we've discussed, there may be some other abilities for us to update the plans, to provide relevant information to the board. So that way, we have everything shown on the plan. So we can definitely look at that. With regards to the slip hazard, again, I mean, if, if there was a, a concern about particularly flow off of the pavement onto Crawford Street, we, we did, as a team, think about whether or not we could possibly do a trench drain across the lower end of the driveway and divert the water into a, a small little area to capture and filter and infiltrate some water off the road just to provide treatment and direct it off into a vegetated area. This area does have some low-lying areas that can just allow water to infiltrate and, and, and percolate into the ground. And if that was, it, it has a concern, we could definitely provide some, some measure, some level of management there. Again, for maybe the, possibly the one-inch storm, we, I know I talked to, I talked to Fred earlier a few weeks ago about possibly providing a one-inch recharge for all impervious on site, at least where it was possible. The entrance, it may be difficult, but a little farther up, we could put a trench drain and definitely reduce the slip hazard on there. At least in, at this location, there's definitely lots of other slip hazards already existing from other driveways on Crawford, and so we don't want to exacerbate it. And if there's something that we could do, again, that's, that's, that's a, a potential simple solution, we can definitely provide that without going into significant engineering-wise, but at least provide some sort of capture and try to direct water away from Crawford Street to get some infiltration.
Ideally, the town would prefer a low spot in the driveway prior to entrance onto Crawford Street. But given the grading here, I'm not sure that that's practical or feasible. But something to alleviate that water coming out onto Crawford Street from the driveway would be beneficial. There's also a section towards the southerly end of the frontage on Crawford Street that sheet flows out onto the right of way as well at the lower corner there, just below the septic system out towards Crawford Street. That area kind of just grades right towards the street and also can send water over. So there, there are other things that could be done maybe to control it. I just think that a stormwater management plan might address all of that.
Okay, let's see. So also a waiver for the lighting plan and photometric plan. Any particular reason for this one?
Um, it's just, we're not planning on having any posts or so, everything, any lights we're gonna have are gonna be mounted on the house, probably just your typical front lights for your front wa, your front porch and a rear light at your patio. That's about it. So nothing fancy or special that we feel is gonna cause a nuisance to the neighborhood as the house is essentially located on the lot.
Okay, also a waiver from the landscaping plan showing existing and proposed landscape features. So where this was to deny, did something else come in after? No, okay, so go ahead.
So the reason why, as this is, as a single-family house, there's, there's a lot of just simplicity, as if there's no real intentions to do significant landscaping on this property of any, at the moment. And so to repair a landscaping plan for a single-family house didn't seem like it was, it was, it was pertinent for particularly this kind of a property and development activity. So, and, and again, we don't really have plans on, on any type of, it wasn't even contemplated. When we looked at it, it was like landscape plans, like we didn't even, we didn't even plan to do any landscaping necessarily. So again, unless there's a specific concern from the board about, I'm trying to improve or keep the aesthetics of Crawford Street. We've, we've tried to keep, we're keeping the stone wall in place. I've been talking to the applicant, we're, we're talking about where we can actually improve the stone wall to make sure it stays in the character that it's in, where it's along the, the limit of work to make sure it stays there. The driveway is in a location where there's no stone wall, and we aren't touching the trees along Crawford Street between the stone wall and there, just to keep the, the, the natural vegetation that's along Crawford Street. So we think the nature of this area is gonna stay relatively the same.
Is Crawford a scenic road or no? No, okay. Okay, any board questions before I flip the page?
Um, the, the nature of the plantings or the vegetation along the street is pretty, looks pretty overgrown. And a lot of that seems to be somewhat invasive. So I, I do think it would be helpful to have an idea of what you're gonna be doing along the road. There's gotta be some idea. You're not just gonna cut down all the trees and all the vegetation and leave, leave it un, sort of unmanaged. I don't imagine. You're putting up a pretty nice house. It would seem, or possibly a nice house.
So the intentions of, of the grading in the area with limited work is to establish those areas with lawn grass. And the areas outside are planned with to leave them in their natural state. I know the applicant has talked with me about what he could do to possibly remove the invasives to try to improve the area along Crawford Street. And, and I did talk to him that that might be a potential, we might have to walk, figure out how to kind of best go through managing that to ensure that we actually did it properly, and it was a, a, a successful process. And, but that is something we've talked about, but we haven't really talked about anything else besides just trying to remove the invasives, allow the natives and the, the, the seeds that are naturally in that soil to, to grow where the invasives are having, are giving them a hard time.
It would be good to see on a plan, just, because if it's not on the plan, then it could be riprap. It could be anything.
Fred, did you have something? I can't tell. Okay.
I did, I did. Well, it can't be riprap if they're not showing riprap on the plan. But the slope in the back of the house is shown as a two-to-one grade. And some kind of landscaping, some kind of treatment of that slope may be appropriate to be shown on the plan because it's gonna be difficult if it's, the way it's left. To be shown on the plan because it's gonna be difficult. If it's the way it's left, I'm guessing it's just gonna be loom and seed. But at the slope it is, it's gonna be very difficult to mow. So some kind of a ground cover that's not requiring mowing. Might be appropriate, in which case the landscaping plan could outline that.
So I mean, the the applicant might just mulch the slope where it needed. I mean, I've seen slopes that are steeper than that had that are vegetated. For like stormwater basins and they they can be mowed or just basically you use a weed whacker to grow. And I think most likely it's gonna be kind of more of a uh. A longer herbaceous vegetation slope. Uh it could also be like wildflowers and other things, uh depending on if uh if if those are introduced as part of the series. But I think our our plan is again, to have have that be grass. I mean, I don't think I don't think the milling is gonna be as as uh intensive as the areas that are gonna be flat lawn.
Any questions on that? Oh Lori, I see you there, yep.
In my experience, mulch on a two to one slope runs off.
Yeah. Okay. Uh oh Bill, sorry, and I don't, I cannot tell everybody, so sorry about that.
That's okay. Um yeah, with all the trees that are being removed, um I think a landscaping plan, you know, of of some type makes sense. Um you know, there's a lot of clear cutting, a lot of um as Millie said, there's a lot of evasives in that in that front area. And then, you know, what's going to happen in the back to try to keep some of that runoff from coming down that, you know, two to one slope.
So just just so that this this waiver request is under the site planner view lists um when you file stuff. And so this this isn't really a a section that's even contemplated in the 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 land disturbance section. So in the sense of this being could be a a large lot and they clear twenty thousand square feet in the middle of the woods and. They might just be stabilizing it. Um and so that's that's kind of why we treated this in the same ways is that we didn't, we didn't really have a landscaping plan in there. Um we could do junipers along the back slope as well. Um the applicant just suggested that he might do that, uh if that's a concern. Again, we could definitely talk about uh that being a condition of approval, um but that that there be juniper plantings along the back slope to help stabilize the area. Um but I think that the 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 purpose of the waiver was made because it it's under a typical site planner review. When you file a site planner, you usually expect all this information because there's a lot of other details, waivers and special requests happening. Uh in this situation here, we're just here for the land disturbance section um of the regulations that says you have to file site planner review because that's the way you get. To the lands disturbance section.
Okay, the next waiver here is the frontage identified on the site plan is incorrect. So some of this has been partially addressed, the frontages have been corrected, but the reduced frontage lot block still remains on the plan. So is this something that'll be fixed or?
Yeah, that's something that we could fix. My apologies, I thought I thought we had corrected it, but I'm guessing that's it's a it's a it's a copy and paste error by the engineer. Um that I should have caught. So my 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 apologies for that, but that that's not the case.
Okay, no worries. Let's see. And already. Okay, so the next is um. A waiver for, so there's an updated, let's see, the pavement cross section was provided, but the drainage system. Design and drainage calculations were not submitted.
And that's that, that's the same relevancy to the previous stormwater comment, basically. It's it's, there's nothing new in this in this section. That is is an additional information or a different request of information or requirements besides what was previously discussed. Under the fact that Mass D E P has single family houses exempt.
Okay, and and Fred, just to clarify, is this something that you do think needs to be submitted?
I do.
Okay.
And um in an effort to make it more clear for the future, the town planner and I. Expect to be before you uh very soon with an amendment to the planning board rules and regulations to remove that exemption. From the section requiring uh design in accordance with the Mass D E P handbook.
Okay. All right, but based on what we have today, this is here and there, you're still, this you think we need the drainage system design and calculations?
I do.
Okay. Uh let's see. So the next one, the erosion control plan should be modified to include detailed proposed gravel, water, bar and sediment trap. And location of proposed soil stockpiles. So we do have the. The water bar and sediment traps are now provided, but they don't have dimensions and soil and stockpile locations are not depicted. Is there a plan to follow up on that one or?
Um we could definitely do that if if needed. Um I mean, from a soil stockpiling standpoint, this is a a a. A cut fill probably balanced site, so we're not expected to have a lot of soiled stockpiled on this site. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be as the as the lot is leveled out uh and brought down in sections and filled in sections. The material's just gonna be brought there and immediately graded. It's not gonna be just stockpiled and left to sit. Um and then once those areas are graded, the loom is gonna immediately be spread. So there may be some small sections of loom that get left. Um we could put those as stockpiles in the back of the the house lot, or they're gonna have the least issue from erosion standpoint, if that board needs that. Um but from a a a practical construction standpoint, we don't expect there to be a lot of stockpiles of any on the site. Just because the way the lot has to be worked to to actually make everything work the way it's on the plan.
Okay, and then finally, it looks like the erosion control plan should be modified to include information about how the trees outside limited work. Shall be protected from construction activities. I'm sorry, these aren't waivers, by the way, these are just comments. Sorry about that. So um that was partially addressed. And then there's a recommendation to specify measures to be used for protection of trees. So any objection to something like that?
Um I mean, we do, we did explicitly put up the orange construction fence around the top part of the site. Precisely because we're trying to ensure that it's clear that this is the limit of work, this is the limited clearing. That's a tree, trees and vegetation outside that area are protected. So we instead of usually just doing erosion controls along the bottom of your site and not doing anything up top. We actually have the plans calling out orange construction fence along the limit of work, so that way we have a clear protection zone for vegetation outside of limited work.
Okay, got it. All right, um any, after going through the comments and um various waiver requests. Any um comments or questions from board members to start?
I mean, I still have some concerns with the amount of trees that are gonna be removed in order to clear this and not having something to. Um measure uh water and drainage and erosion control. I think that that i- in some ways, because of the way this property is, um it it. Being such an incline, it it probably does warrant having a bit more robust. Uh water management than a flat piece of property.
Other comments on that or other comments?
Yeah, I I I agree with Millie. I I think with all the tree clearing, um. You know, there there has to be some type of plan to to show what's going to be done to mitigate. Right? Um you know, I've lived in a house where there was a thirty foot hill behind me. And then six feet of backyard and my basement would always fell. Um so, you know, having something there to to show us what the intent is, I I understand, you know. From the comments that. Th- there's, there's a desire to fix it. There's a desire to do the to do the right thing, but without a plan there, there's nothing to to show us. What the intent is.
So I think with the significant area of land clearing, I I think it's a reasonable concern about erosion and stormwater management. Um I don't, there's some things on here that I'm not as concerned about, like the the tree diameter study. Um the line of sight from the driveway seems reasonable. Um but I do think, just given the nature and size and scope. And the grade of that property and where it sits, um I would have some concern about um the stormwater management and erosion on this property.
Okay, Amy, any thoughts from you?
Yep, I agree. I think there needs to be the stormwater management plan, the design calculations. I'd still like to see the line of sight.
Um, okay, is that something, so from the applicant perspective, you're you're hearing a ma-. At least for the stormwater so far, you're hearing a majority of the board um want to actually see that. Is that something you would want the opportunity to come back with, or do you wanna forge ahead with what we have, or what's your preference?
Um I think, I guess, the the question is, I heard a lot of comments, but there wasn't, I mean, except for the last one, there wasn't necessarily a clear a standard again. I mean, we're definitely amendable to provide some level of 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 management here if if that's what the board wants us to do. Again, um I did mention trying to do at least the one inch of 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 capture and infiltration on the site for the impervious surface. I think that's a a a an achievable uh measure on this site. Uh it does require um definitely more effort. And it costs by the applicant to put those measures in place with the trench drain, everything else. But I think that's possible um to like a a one inch. Um rainstorm level. And I think that provides definitely some some control, particularly for those first flush storms. And if the board is amendable to that, I think we can definitely work towards that. And if, again, if the board wants to see the sightline distance, we could definitely. Um provide you a diff- um that information um just so that the board has everything on the plan.
Okay, thoughts on that?
I'd like to see the full stormwater management plan designing calc set up that our bylaws are calling for. I think it's going down a slippery slope if we um. If we um wave those because of any other lot coming forth after this. And I do think it will be a slippery slope not to make fun as it gets into um Crawford Street. Even with the drainage near the side of the driveway, what happens in the winter when you push your snow there? There was a lot of road freezing this winter.
I think we also have to be concerned about the, not only the grade of the driveway, but the fire trucks. And on you you know, municipal services, being able to access it if it is slippery at all. Um Fred, in your opinion, does some of the mitigation that he's that Mark has mentioned, is is that? Enough to offset what your the concerns are here, do you think, or without having some of the numbers to work with? It's it's hard to gauge.
Well, uh typically, we would wanna see um recharge of roof runoff and stuff to mitigate the uh. The water coming off the impervious areas. Uh trench drain at the end of the driveway would be helpful to reduce the amount of water. Uh coming out onto Crawford Street. Um the stormwater management plan could address uh. Perhaps, you know, a pooling area, so the water that's grading across uh towards that low point could be possibly expanded. And and then capture some more of the water, but an overall stormwater system, uh stormwater management plan would be helpful.
I um we're gonna pause for a second and take some comments, um public comments. Uh we I just see we have some hands and this is a public hearing, so I wanna give the opportunity for that as well. So if anyone in the public has a comment related to this hearing, um please raise your hand and. I see um Leslie Williams, I'm gonna allow you to talk here. Leslie, just state your name and address. Oops, and you might be on mute.
Am I, am I unmuted now?
Yep, you're unmuted.
I'm Leslie Williams. I live at two ninety-five Crawford Street. Um we, our land abuts. What was formerly two ninety-seven Crawford Street, that has all been cleared, the the former residence is, has been. Um taken down. Um and I did have a, first of all, I don't know exactly where we are um on this. On this schematic, I don't know how close we are, but I am concerned about um flooding. What I don't know, understand how many trees are going to be taken down, and I'm concerned about a possible flooding issue.
Okay.
I believe that the 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 question was from the abutter um who is south of the property itself. Um and I I didn't quite catch the name.
Williams, the prop, my daughter is the owner of the property, it's Lindsay Brady is the owner.
Okay, so this plan here shows Lindsay Brady, this is her property right here. So this is her property line here. And then lot three is is now basically two lots away from her property. So there's lot two is between her and then this uh lot, because it's just three oh five, is also between her and the property. Just for for context of where she lives.
Okay, um that's helpful, but I I mean, it still looks like I we are in, you know. Possible flood proximity, if you are, I mean, anyone who's been around here knows we there are an enorm- there's enormous amount of trees back there. And I'm assuming lots of them will be taken down, and I just didn't know how that would affect us. We also have a very high graded um driveway, but this house was built in nineteen sixty-nine before. I'm certain before there were, you know, the regulations that are in place now. Uh we do have a significant issue with runoff, water runoff from storms. Um so the addition of more construction to uh to just to our, to the. Um west of us is a little bit concerning.
Just just just, just to clarify that that um that that her property is to the south of the project. The the land slopes to the northeast and Crawford Street also strip, also sheds to the northeast. Um the contours on the site plan show the street going down in grade from three eighty to three uh seventy-eight here. So sheet flow from Crawford Street along this frontage already directs water away, uh is is away from her property. And the contours on her property go in that same direction and the grading that we have maintains that direction of topography.
Okay, so then where would the water go?
It goes in this, it goes in the same direction that it does currently, it goes to the northeast. The grading, the grading and the contours here are all sloping to the northeast. As you go and that that's the way that the site's designed is to maintain that that general topography slope towards northeast stays the same. That way, we're not directing water towards other butters in any other way.
Well, right now, there's plenty of tree, you know, there's there's plenty of rootage, so you know, I I'm my concern really is if. And again, I'm not really certain that I know what I'm talking about, but I am concerned about uh lots of trees. Tree removal and what that would mean in terms of, I I understand what you're saying, but we are in pro- close proximity to what this. These, where this is going to be, the construction's going to be.
Okay, great. Thank you, Leslie, for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have um Sue D. Hi Sue.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, just your name and address.
Awesome, thank you. Uh my name is Sue Damaris. I'm uh one of the owners of three oh eight Crawford Street, directly across from the site that we're looking at right now. And um uh I've lost his name. Mark, you had said earlier in this call that you could point out where driveways are. Could you please point out where the three oh eight Crawford driveway is on this plan?
You're muted, Mark.
My apologies, I believe I'm three oh eight, I I I believe you have two driveways.
Uh nope, we just got one.
You just have one, okay, then I believe this is your driveway cut right here.
Yeah, that might.
Individual cut, it's opposite the hydrant.
Nope, nope, that's that's our next door neighbor. We're we're the next ones, we're the next ones up. The hydrant, we're we're, if you're.
Then you must be to the south, because the the the, I know the next, the next homeowner has two driveway cuts. This is one driveway cut and then the other driveway cut for them is over here. This is like a a barn access to their barn. And then their next driveway cuts over here for them.
Um, I I disagree with your assessment. Um I know where the fire hydrant is. And if we're looking, standing at Crawford Street with a fire hydrant is on the left of our driveway, I think our driveway is probably right around where. Between the D and Crawford in the S and Street. So that that's my guess of where our driveway is. And then our next door neighbor.
Then it must, then it must, it must be this one then.
It's it's a very, very wide. It's very, our, it's not a double driveway, but it's very wide.
Yeah, this is a pretty, this is a pretty wide driveway still.
Right, that's that's probably us. It's got, it's part driveway and part gravel. Okay, so that's where my home is situated. Um I am, uh as this previous caller also said, I'm I'm very concerned about the water flow. Um even as things are currently, we get a lot of water coming down our driveway, enough that it washes out. Our um, you know, it's washing out our our landscaping along the driveway. Um even even as is, um I have a lot of concerns about. Um a- additional amounts of water coming down, because it's could flow like directly down onto our property, which we are very distinctly downhill. From this property. Um and I don't know if you wanna speak to that in my other. Um, and I don't know if you want to speak to that. My other concern is about the, again, the amount of trees that um you're talking of taking out. I've heard you use the word clear cutting. Um, that's a great concern to me. Was wondering if you could speak to that more?
So the road, I believe, um, the road uh appeared to me is, I think, crowned slightly, Fred. Um, and I know I noticed that there's definitely flow patterns on both sides of the street. So um in regards to the the opposite property, I don't think there's a a likelihood of of sheet flow from this property jumping across the street um onto the neighboring properties. Um, again, um, to to grade the site, we do have to cut, we do have to cut down the trees to allow for for regrading. Um, a- and um there, um, we don't think there's going to be a significant hydrological change to 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 runoff from the development um for this that would that would um impact the butters.
Mark, did I just hear you say that you'll be clear cutting all of the trees there to regrade it?
The the correct, the 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 plan shows our limit of work, and we're we're cutting trees within the limit of work to allow us to regrade and work the site.
Um, I'm I'm new to this. Would you please, um, I I don't know how to read this chart. Would you please um show me where the limit of work is? And I see, I see the heavy dotted line.
So if you see, do you see my cursor on Crawford Street right now? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the limit of work. So limit of work is along this dash line is an erosion control line. And from here, we go to an orange construction fence that goes up here, goes up here, comes here. Orange construction fence runs down along the property line here, right here is where we pick up more erosion controls, because the slope's starting to direct water towards the edge. Run down to here, and then we run along the stone wall here, and we run up here, and then up and around here. So we protect this area that I have right here. So that's our limit of work. So that's the work area that we have to, we have to clear trees to allow us to do construction.
So the area that there's two arrows there, was it say phase two? So so that there's a little bump out from Crawford Street, that area will be untouched?
This, yeah, this white area right in here will be untouched.
Okay, and then along the further down, further to the south of that, y- you're talking of clearing the trees in through there. I'm just trying to understand the the area that you're talking about here.
Yeah, but everything behind this, everything behind the stone wall where the fire hydrant is, that's where our limited work is. So we're not doing anything below the stone wall there.
Yeah, that's that's extremely steep in through there where the fire hydrant is and such.
That's why we're not touching it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Sue.
Yeah, one one moment. Do you have anything? Okay, thank you very much. My husband is here as well. Thank you.
Does he have a question, Sue?
Uh, he's saying, no, he's all good. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other comments from, so I'm gonna lower your hand. Any other attendees in the audience who'd like to comment? Okay, I don't see any. Um, board members, Amy, I see you have something.
Yeah, is there any way to scientifically demonstrate what the change may or not be due to all the um tree removal and the significant slope, or is that part of the stormwater management plan? Like you, you say there isn't going to be like a hydrological change, but is there any way to quantify that?
So I mean, I I said there wouldn't be any significant hydrological change. We think that would affect butters. Um, and with regards to, um, you can do um the DEP standards for for large properties and commercial properties. Um, do have ways to 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 calculate that. And again, um, we're willing to definitely try to mitigate that. Um, again, we could definitely do some, do a one inch um capture of all impervious surface, do dry wells for the roof runoff to do one, one inch. And then if that, as it infiltrates, i- it it could be more, and then doing some trench drains on the driveway to to capture that one inch and try to provide some treatment, and particularly just direct it off into areas that are vegetated to 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 slow down water. That's something they think we could definitely mitigate a- a- um in that fashion. Um, I think that's a reasonable effort that we can do as a team that we can we can accomplish while continuing to maintain our limit of work and keeping our our site as tight as possible, which uh her goal is to reduce tree clearing wherever we can.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Um, yeah, I have a a couple of questions. Can you show me that uh groundwater map again of where up by Fisher Street, it's wetlands, I believe?
So this is, this is the, the, this is the original A and R uh property that was subdivided. So um this is Fisher Street right here and Crawford Street here. So this is um Brook is um Brook is blanking the name. I should know the name of this Brook. But um this is a a major Brook right here. It goes underneath Crawford Street, then goes through uh forty-four Fisher Street before it goes under Fisher Street down here. Uh, and there's more wetlands back here, all behind these lots that are way um in the back here off of, on the other side of Crawford Street or off of Foxwood at Lane.
So is there any concern because of the water go, does go northeast right towards that area that there's gonna have an impact on that? Or is this not quite a big enough lot to really be that that?
I think, I think it's far away. The the size of the lot and the way we've got it worked, I think if there's not going to be a significant impact. I mean, DEP did 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 have this question, and 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 they they knew they didn't require for single family houses to use stormwater, which um I mean, we may all think that maybe they should do some level of, and again, this, we're willing, we're, this applicant's definitely willing to do something to try to to help mitigate some of these areas um in some form, um, trying, doing all the standards um is a significant area and and effort of work, and also would require a lot more land disturbance. So um we think there's a a way to kind of uh mitigate while also rekeeping our footprint as small as possible and and reducing tree clearing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that what is being done is effective, because I've certainly seen areas in the town where there's a steep house on one side, and then there's a lower level on the other side of the road. And I don't know if that previous caller was on a lower level or a down driveway, but most of what is up on the upper level house ends up in their yard, uh whether it's sand or salt or bark. Look, it goes, it does travel across the street, and that's on, it's on a different street. It's not, I don't think it's it's Crawford Street at this point, but we have a couple of other areas in town where we have a high level on one side and a lower level on the other side. And it's problematical for the people on the downside of that.
So you are correct that the land is is high on this side and low on this side. I think the way Crawford Street is currently graded, there is a, there is a crown in the road, which keeps runoff shooting both sides. So um runoff that the the properties that are down here are seeing is probably the runoff, it's following the curb lot, the the edge of the road as it sheet flows to the left and right. That may be what they're seeing um versus, I think, this property, because of the way the the it's it's it works out with the grading, I don't think there's going to be uh an impact.
Okay. Laura, you have something? I just noticed your hand.
Yeah, um, the applicant may want to consider the use of retaining walls. Uh, it could do a couple of low retaining walls as a way of limiting the amount of uh disturbance, particularly to the hill in the back of the house.
Okay.
So I mean, we we, I mean, we 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 did consider retaining walls as as a potential option. And 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 again, our our goal was to kind of make a lot that was kind of graded and smoothed out to make gradual slopes rather than just doing a a small, tight lot that could just avoid being before this board at all. So um that was kind of the 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 intentions of our application. So we went through the effort of submitting the application and paying the fee and coming before you. Um, just because we felt that was a more appropriate way to to do this development versus just trying to avoid um the boards in this town.
Um, uh, uh, so I'm just gonna, I see one more hand up here. I'm just gonna take another comment um from the public. Laura, if you want to say your name and address? Oops, Laura, can you hear us? I think you're on mute. Um we can't really hear you. If you're, what do you do if you're on a phone, star or something to speak? I've run into this before.
Uh, so it looks like they're un muted. It, I'm I'm not sure if their mic's connected.
Oh, okay. Laura, if you wanna, um, if you, your mic gets hooked up there, you're welcome to raise your hand again. I can't, we can't hear you. Um, it looks like let's see. I thought it was star six or something to be able to.
I think it is star six. I should know. I had to do it a number of times.
All right, I guess that didn't work. We lost her. All right. Um, okay, so other other board comments or questions at this time? Um, for my own, at this point, I I personally err on the side of the staff recommendations um for what's what's included in Lori's memo to us. There's also a couple that I don't um, I don't actually agree with. And one of them just came to fruition, the ownership of abutting land is one of them. Um, I think that was clearly a problem tonight. The there's another one that, let's see. Some I would be okay with, but for the most part, now there's a quite a few waivers on here that I'm I'm not in favor of. So um it hearing sort of the board feedback, um, I guess I'd leave it to the applicant. If you want to um just push forward, or you want to reconsider going back and submitting some of these things here?
And hey, Carrie, it seems like Laura uh rejoined and has her hand raised again.
Oh, sure, sure. Okay, Laura, we're gonna try this again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, again, just your name and address.
Okay, I'm so, that, so I'm Laura Zaitin, and I actually live on Franklin Circle, which is off of Crawford. And I just want to comment that we go up and down Crawford a lot, and we also use West Street. And when there's flooding in our area, West Street gets closed uh because of the flooding hazard. So if there's any additional, you know, safety precautions that we can take, that Crawford's a really highly trafficked cross street. So I just wanted to mention like that area as it is, is very, it's very flood, you know, active. So if there is extra steps that we can take to make that area safer for all the people that are commuting and running and walking and bike riding on that street, that would be really helpful as well. And that's all. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you, Laura.
Just for Lucas, um, White's, uh, West Street is to the south of the development way over here. Um, so the Crawford section, street that we're at work, we're discussing doesn't even pitch towards um West Street.
Okay.
And and to your last comment, I I think uh the applicant definitely wants to consider the the board's comments. We appreciate the time um that the town planner and the town engineer have put into reviewing this and providing comments. And I think we can definitely provide the board with some of the information. Um, again, again, our 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 only concern is is making sure that we feel that we can submit something that the board will be amendable to. Again, I've mentioned doing um a one inch um recharge of all of all of all impervious surfaces, except maybe that front section, which Fred mentioned, is really hard to get. But everything else, I think we can do one inch with recharge chambers off the the house to do the gutters, to at least do one inch of recharge, and then capture the driveway runoff and also recharge that uh for up to one inch. If if that's something the board thinks uh is what's really needed to kind of help address the concerns of the of the stormwater runoff onto Crawford and on the safety issues. I think that's something we can can definitely accomplish. We just want to make sure that we uh we 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 accomplish what the board is really looking for here.
Okay, but so I guess from my perspective, I would defer to Fred on what you think the viability of that is.
I think that uh capturing the one inch runoff on the roof and the impervious areas is 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 good. But I think that there have been enough comments about the amount of runoff from the site. And although Mark has indicated he doesn't believe it's significant, I think uh some kind of a hydrologic calculation about the volume of runoff in the post-construction versus the pre-construction is important to make sure that it's not more. And so that if there's anything that can be done to capture that and detain it so that it doesn't increase uh coming off the site onto Crawford Street um should be done. The uh the coefficient of runoff is going to change when you take a forested area and you turn it into lawn with some slopes. There's some flat areas and there's some steep areas. Um, the cuts and fills, if it's truly a balanced site and there's no, the stockpiling is going to be minimum, that's a, that's a good thing. But there's, there's still a need for some evaluation of the runoff coming off the site. Um, and that should be accomplished as well as the capturing of the one inch of roof runoff and impervious cover um going forward as a mineral.
Okay, does that sound like something that for the applicant that you are interested in providing or?
So from from our perspective, I mean, this this, we could be before this board with just the land clearing of this this lot without any impervious surface at all. And then we could pull a building permit and put up the house um as a separate item. The putting the house up in the driveway um is a driveway permit and a building permit for the house. That's it. Doesn't trigger anything particularly. So we really feel that 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 considering the fact that we are, we're going to go with some sort of level of management. I think I'm doing a full-blown pre and post study of of the drainage on the whole site. Again, um, for which level of storm is again a question, is it for the one inch or is it for larger storms? Um, I think from the the particularly the the regulations, when it talks about protecting the site during construction through adequate erosion, sedimentation control, the focus is during construction, and we're looking at providing stuff that's post-construction. And so I think that's something that the applicant um understands the concerns of the town. I think he understands that he wants to live here. He wants to to care about the neighborhood around him. And so therefore, he's willing to do a a level of measurement without going through a full-blown um study of everything that usually is done. Um, and so um I know Fred said that the one inch is good, um, but he also mentioned this, the study of the changes. And again, what level of change are we talking here, particularly when um we're trying to do something that's that's more reasonable versus trying to, again, um, I mean, you could, you could design for larger storms, but you could clear a lot more land while doing it. Um, because um it's necessary to make those those things, these things work. So um we're trying to create a tight site here, that's small and low impact as much as possible, while trying to provide some measures that do to impact, that do impact post-construction impervious surfaces, um, which uh in under the land clearing section isn't mentioned, it's just mentioned during construction.
Okay, so and what's your alternate proposal that where you would just circumvent the board?
Uh, I mean, it it, I mean, so I mean, we we we, I mean, if 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 you wanted to, you could build a tight site under twenty thousand square feet and do not be before this board and do twenty thousand square feet, build a lot out, and then um, and then eventually do future development twenty years from now versus this, this is kind of what we were trying to do. And so we're trying, we're, we we felt that coming before the board was a reasonable effort to in uh keep the community involved in the project. Um, this is a level effort. The applicant spent money to to go through this process versus trying to avoid the boards in town. And again, provide some some mitigating measures for the stormwater. We think that's 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 a relevant um effort by the applicant to 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 address some of the concerns in in a reasonable way um that also allows the project to go on.
Okay, so the alternate plan would be to cut under twenty thousand square feet and then come back to cut twenty thousand more square feet?
I I mean, that 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 could be done as long as it's done according to the regulations, which there are, I mean, a- again, I'm, but I I don't, we don't want to just try to work around the boards in this town. That was not our, that 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 was our intention. We decided to go with the planning board versus do a larger disturbance and go before the commission and with a big plan, everything else. We thought that let's go with a smaller site, smaller, tighter site, more simple, go before the planning board, work through what their concerns are with erosion and sedimentation during construction and manage the water there. And I think what we have here is something that was what was intended. And the biggest concern was the regulations were written for the concerns that we think we've addressed here. And since during construction, sites not being managed well. And I think here we have a site that will be managed well and has been well thought out.
Okay, okay, so, oh, go ahead. I heard somebody, was that you, Meli?
Yeah, that's me. I mean, I have some concerns when you say to go around the border, avoid the board, but that yet what's being presented to us is asking for at least six or seven waivers. So you you know, it short of reinventing the wheel for this particular project in this particular site, there are reasons we have some of these processes in place. And and in order to try to capture what I think we all want, which is a good result and a uh, you know, working with the boards and working with the neighborhoods, there's gotta be uh some give and take. And and if if ninety percent of the people that come before us have to do a stormwater report because it helps us do a better job at providing that to our our community, then then that's kind of where it sits. And they don't think that giving exemptions just because somebody has, didn't have the time or didn't want to put the expense into it is a qualifying rationale.
So just to be clear, the waivers that we're requesting are not under the land clearing section of the regulations. We comply fully with that section. That's the section. And basically, this the site plan review is a, is the, is the, uh, the, is the um object that allows the land clearing permit to be issued is through site plan review. And so um we've tried to address all we can under the site plan review for a general project, which And so, um, we've tried to address all we can under the site plan review for a general project, which is again, usually they're asking for special waivers and zoning ver- uh, uh, all sorts of. Odd things and unique circumstances, um, just because of the nature of the lot. Here, we don't have any of those. We just have a single family lot that happens to be over 20,000 square feet. So we're dealing or focused in on the land clearing and disturbance section, make sure you comply with all those things. So that's, that, that's the way we see this application is, is, is the application's focus is on that. Um, and again, uh, we can definitely address the, the, the issue with the, the driveway, um, being a steep slope. We, I think we can shallow that out and get it under 14%. We can definitely provide at least one inch of recharge. If they, if that's enough for this board to, um, think about from regards to managing the stormwater, we can definitely provide. A little more information on the landscaping, um, we can definitely provide the board with the, their butter location around the property. So that's clear. I think that information we can definitely provide, um, to provide the board enough information to feel they can make a decision, particularly under the land disturbance permit, language. Which is, uh, uh, which was our purpose in, in filing here. So that just to be clear.
No, I understand that.
Okay, any other board comments? All right, so I think that what the applicant is looking at at this point is, um. I mean, with, without an official vote here, you're probably not looking at getting the, all of these waivers granted. It seems like the board does want to see a stormwater, um, management plan. Also, the site distance, the landscaping plan. Those, those are things that I heard. Did I, well, I personally think the ownership of letting land came up tonight as a problem. So I think that for me, um, I would want to see. Other, other waivers that the board, um, would not want to grant so that the applicant can understand what we're looking for. I'm just looking through them again. Cause there's, there's quite a few.
I personally am less concerned about the site distance because I do know that it is a, it, it would be, uh, uh, it's a clear site distance. Would like to see a bit of a landscaping plan, um, and, and fine without the lighting plan. I think we can get those later if we need to.
The only thing off my top of my head was, um, I was fine without the lighting plan. But I would like to get approval from the town engineer that the site distance is fine.
Yeah, the one thing that I, when Fred mentioned that the slope would possibly change that with a 14% slope. So maybe if it's not that slope, Fred, could you clarify that? I wrote my notes, but then. So as you went, be, because of the slope, it, it could she actually change the site distance depending on the, was that, is that what you're saying?
The way that you're supposed to calculate the site distances, uh, the eye of sight being three and a half feet above the road grade. At, uh, so many feet from the edge of the, of the road, uh, edge of the right away. And in this case, the driveway goes up at 14% right from the edge of the traveled way, not the edge of the right away, but the edge of the traveled way. And so the car could be slightly higher than. That three and a half foot with the line of sight, so. Having them, i- i- it actually, it probably improves the site distance because they would be slightly higher than lower. It just, the, the angle is more problematic for the fire department. As I said, they cannot serve a building at 14%. Um, and this is more than 14%. Ideally, I'd like to see it at 10%, um, which is the maximum we use in other, other cases for larger developments. Common driveways or subdivision roadways, um, but we don't have a standard that I can say. Yeah, without a doubt, it has to meet, uh, we don't have any driveway grades, uh, requirements.
Thank you. Let's see. And the rest are actually just comments, not waivers, okay. So it sounds like waivers that the board, or majority of the board anyway, um, that didn't have as much concern with was the lighting plan, didn't seem to be as concerning. It sounds like Amy and I had a site distance concern, Anthony or Bill, any, um, comments from you on that one?
No, I don't think so.
No, I mean, the only other thing that I was, you know, again, it's the tree study, if that's a part of this, I'm not so concerned about.
Okay. Uh, I'm just trying to catch them all. So waiver is not applicable. Um, the location of groundwater and flood plain, it seemed like we have that in a separate plan, Lori, that's all in a separate plan, is that adequate?
Yes, I'm satisfied with the, uh, this plan right here. I think it adequately shows the location of the flood zone as well as the groundwater protection area.
Okay, so those, any, any board members feel that that is a concern? I don't personally. Or at this point. Okay, so it sounds like, um. And are there others that would like to see the ownership of a budding land or is that just me? I'm just trying to give a sense of majority versus singular.
I, I would like to see that. I think that's helpful.
I'd agree.
Okay. So we groundwater flood plains covered, it sounds like the. 50 feet of southern property boundary is no longer applicable. The 10, the trees, so, so Anthony's not necessarily concerned about that. Any other board members feel, again, you're not bound to this, I'm just trying to give a sense of majority or not.
What was the, um, correct?
This is where you do the, the, um, 10 inches in diameter, so.
Yeah, I think we all understand that it's going to be a clear cut and, you know, finding the trees that are more than 10 inches at first height. I don't know if that's really going to make that much of a difference.
Okay, does anyone disagree with, uh, Lori, you have a reason?
Yeah, uh, the area of particular concern for me is the open space area along the frontage.
Yep.
There's a lot of, uh, invasives along the property frontage. And I wasn't clear when I went out to the site, whether the invasives are within this, uh, this limit of work area. Uh, area that's excluded from the limit of work. Or whether that's a location where there are existing trees. So I in particular are interested in the identification of any 10-inch trees in this area along the frontage.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It may also be appropriate to locate any, uh, significant trees along the limit of work. Where the cutting is going to be, especially in the back of the lot. So if there are 10-inch trees right along with the orange construction fences and they start to cut, then those trees are. Subject to removal or, or failure or death. Um, and that might be an area where some small tree wells or a small retaining wall might be a good option to, uh, allow that tree to stay. If there's some way to, but you wouldn't know that unless you do the survey, at least along the limit of work, along the rear of the, uh, behind the house.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Um, and then. Sounded like lighting plan is not something the board is necessarily concerned about. Landscaping plan did seem to be a concern of majority, and that was it for waivers. So does that give you a sense of what you would need to come back with or do you want to come back with that? Do you want to?
I, I think that does, and I think most of that information i- i- is appropriate and relevant, and we appreciate your, the comments. Again, just, just, we want to feel that we have a, a confident thing in sense of, we can definitely do, um. One inch of recharge and provide the calculations on how the systems were sized to recharge that. But we, we don't really feel like going through a full-fledged stormwater study is necessary. We'll definitely provide you calculations on the size of the systems, how they capture that one inch, how they're going to be mitigate, how they're going to do that, how they're going to function. Have an operation maintenance plan and how those will be maintained. Um, I think that's something that we can definitely do, but it's definitely going to be a smaller, definitely package of just information on how they were sized, how they're going to function and be maintained. Versus a, a full-fledged study of pre, post and everything else. I think that's something we could definitely do. Everything else you've listed, I've got them all down and we can definitely get those addressed and, uh, we appreciate the board's comments.
Um, so Fred, does that give us, based on what the applicant's saying, does that solve the, for the problem or not necessarily?
Not completely, um, I still expect to work with Lori and come back with, uh. Amendment to the planning board rules and regulations to remove that exemption that's, uh, indicated in the stormwater handbook and make it requirement going forward. I would like to see as a minimum what the increase, if any, or I'd like to see no increase in runoff coming off the site at the driveway. Or the, uh, southerly end of the property so that the water is not increasing. Coming off the site at those two locations where it cheap flows out onto Crawford Street or into the right away. Uh, specifically the driveway and the, and the previous, the lower corner and the, the site plane that's on the screen now.
So just, just for clarification, Fred, I mean, we can definitely show that the one inch will be captured on site and that there's no increase from the one inch rainfall event. On the property and I think your, your thoughts about the water along the southeast corner of the property, we can definitely look at addressing, um. In, in, in some form that, that, that's amendable, but, um.
I think the requirement is for the one inch to be captured on the impervious covers and recharged into the ground. I think it's a different, uh, issue with the runoff coming off the site at those locations where it cheap flows out, uh, towards the street and could wash across. What we're looking for is no increase or, yeah, at least in a hundred-year storm. If there's an increase that it doesn't cause any downstream flooding or doesn't cause any, any damage to abutting properties. So still looking for something that shows how the change in the grading and the coefficient of runoff on the site will. Impact the amount of water leaving the site.
So I, I, if you want us to, to look at the one-inch storm and how it impacts the current grading, I think we could definitely, again, add that to part of our management. Add capture as all the impervious, except for again, that front section, where you said it may be very difficult. We got to look at how that grade is going to change when we drop it to 13, under 14% for the fire. But I think we can definitely look at how we can capture any increase from the changes in the lawn areas, um, on site, uh, for the one-inch storm. But I think going above the one-inch storm, the, 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 the effort, I don't, i- is significant. We probably have to disturb more land, which means we wouldn't even be before this board, we'd go before the conservation commission. And so I think at this point, uh, our, our, our goal is to provide some sort of mitigating measure, again, that's something that is dealing with impervious surfaces and runoff on the site. Post-construction under the land disturbance section, uh, of the regulations. But again, if we, if one inch off the entire site, I think we can look at pre and post, uh, for the one-inch storm and, and make that a balance.
I don't find that the one-inch storm is adequate, the one-inch storm, the one-inch rainfall event is not even a two-year storm. It's a lower intensity storm, it's not, um, all of the drainage and the stormwater management starts at a two-year storm, which is 3.3 inches of rain. So. I don't think one inch is adequate, it may be okay for, you know, capturing runoff from the roof and the gutters and the downspouts on the building and, and whatever you can do on the driveway. But I don't think it's adequate for this, uh, runoff from the site and would encourage the board to ask for more.
Okay, so, um, board members, do you? What's your preference?
Me, I think we should stick with the stormwater management plan, design and calculations. That are called for in the bylaws.
I agree.
Yeah, I would support that as well, so. Any other comments on that?
I see Lori has her hand up, I don't know.
Sorry, Lori, is that from before or new?
Sorry, that was from before, I'll take it down.
Okay.
So we appreciate Fred's comments and we'll take them under advisement.
Okay, so do you want to, um, then I take it, we need to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, and then in terms of continuing, do you want to, um, our next meeting is only a couple of weeks away. So I don't know timeline-wise, is that enough time for you to go back and take a look or do you need more time than that?
When is the next meeting? What's the date?
Um, Lori, what is that, the?
October 18th, and the meeting after that is November 1st.
And our October 18th was already pretty full, wasn't it?
No, well, just, uh, zoning bylaws.
We can, we can continue to November 1st, that way the, there's less concern with the agenda on the 18th. That also just ensures that we have enough time, so, um, continuous to November 1st is fine.
Okay, is there anything else that night, Lori, or we can just continue to 6:00 PM?
The only thing that we have on the agenda for that night is, uh, 180 barefoot. Continuance from a few months ago.
Yeah, got it. Okay, okay, so why don't, um, at this point, I will, um. Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 317 Crawford Street Site Plan Approval for Site Disturbance of 42,500 square feet of land area. To October, I'm sorry, November 1st at 6:00 PM, at 6:00 PM, is that right?
We may possibly have, uh, 180 barefoot, uh, but of course I do expect them to withdraw. So we could have two items, uh, at 6 o'clock, or you could just continue this one to 6:10.
Okay, I'm going to gamble and go for 6 o'clock. Do you think that's a smart gamble?
Sure. Only 10 minutes.
You, you can actually advertise them both at the same time and take whichever one you like at the, the night of the meeting.
All right, so why don't we, um, continue to November 1st at 6, is there a motion to continue to November's 1st at 6:00 PM?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Millie?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
Millie?
Oh, I'm sorry, again. Still I.
Carrie's an I, okay, so that'll be continued to November 1st at 6:00 PM. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Continue Public Hearing for 100 Barefoot Road Special Permit Safety and Approval. So Millie, I believe this is the one you recuse yourself from?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if the minutes could reflect that, um, Millie Milton recused herself from this hearing. Um, and we will note when she returns back to the meeting. Do we have, Vito, do you have anyone else on your team coming tonight?
Um, yep, there's, uh, Dario, Demar, John Manuel Rose. And I think that's it over there, just those two.
Okay, great, I'm going to go switch over my materials. Okay, great, so we have some revisions and updates, did you want to speak to those?
Sure, um, so I think since. I can just share my screen quickly, let's get there. Okay, so, um, since actually last time, I think what, one of the things we were waiting for was actually the lighting plan. Uh, we had gone through the site plans, all the revisions last time. Um, I can go through anything that, you know, anyone wants to recap, I can certainly go through that. But I think one of the bigger things we were just waiting on was the lighting plan, which I just brought up here. Some of the revisions that were asked for were just related mostly to this front, uh, driveway right in here. And previously there was no lighting proposed out there, it was all focused on the parking areas. But the, uh, lighting designer has added a light up in the front here, which will light up this, uh, front driveway. While also limiting the, uh, cutoff, uh, to zero with the property lines. So they proposed that, that light up in the front. So I think that was, that was kind of the, the last revision, uh, item that we needed. The other item was that, uh, Lori was drafting up the, uh, draft conditions of approval that she sent out. And we've gone through them and the applicants reviewed them and didn't see any issues with any of the conditions that had been proposed by Lori. I think that that was all the changes that we had from last time, there weren't any, really any changes to the site plan itself, was more, uh, getting that lighting plan submitted. And, uh, time for the draft conditions so they could be reviewed. If you want me to go through the site plan a little bit, just to recap, I can certainly do that, just let me know.
Wait, just light, were we, we're doing landscaping too or just lighting?
I thought it was just the lighting, because the landscaping, I believe, was in, uh, if it wasn't, I, just trying to refresh, maybe it came in right the last minute. Um, but this was the updated landscaping plan. Um, and essentially it was just updated to coordinate with the removal of some of these parking spaces along this edge. Um, and then the retaining wall that was added along in here. Um, and then some of the removal of parking uh down in this area. So it was more just coordinated and updated with the um most current site plan.
Okay. Any questions, board members, on this item or the, the lighting or landscaping? The only outstanding things I had, I actually had landscaping, the photometrics. Um, and then the stream. So it looks like Concom, that goes to Concom at some point?
Yep, and we met with um Concom for the R D A, uh, just to confirm that that is an intermittent stream. Uh, they issued a negative determination, uh, which just confirms that all works outside the buffer zone and we don't have to file with conservation for a notice of intent. Uh, we did file a stormwater permit with them and we are on the October twentieth agenda. I think they just moved the meeting date to the twentieth. Uh, so we're on the agenda for that meeting with conservation for stormwater.
Okay.
Or land disturbance permit, actually is what it's called.
Okay, got it. Okay, board members, did you have a chance to read through some of the conditions that were considered? Any questions or comments?
No, I would assume staff. Everybody in staff reviewed it and all their concerns were covered. I think the D P W and Fred, everything was covered.
Yes, I made sure to uh include the comments uh from the fire chief as well as uh D P W director. And of course Fred has reviewed it and made sure that the conditions that he suggested are correct.
Thank you.
Could you just remind me, I'm sorry, this is a special permit because, is they use special permit?
Yes, it's because of the warehouse use.
Okay.
And then it's also site plant review.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Bear with me a second. Okay. Okay, any other further comments from staff? I'm sorry, from board or staff?
Actually, just had one thing. Um, in the decision under number one, in its Roman numeral four. Say. On page six. Where it says prepare and submit a completed operation and maintenance inspection report to the town engineer. And um originally it said prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Should we have prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit or that is not needed?
Um, actually it does. So it's under K. So the condition, the overarching condition is prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall complete the following. And then I have
Okay.
You know, one, two, three, four, five under there.
Sorry, because it went to the next page. I was I didn't go back to the top. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? I will take um, so the public hearing, are there any comments from the public at this time? Okay, I don't see any comments from the public. All right, with that, um, if there are no further comments or questions or information from the applicant, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I say so move to that one or do you want me to read out a motion?
Uh, no, just motion to close the public hearing if you're just.
Okay, so move.
Okay, second. All in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Carrie's an I. Okay, so at this time, um, the hearing is closed and so why don't we start our deliberations? And what we have on the table here is number one, we have a waiver request. So that was a waiver from um rules and regs uh seven point two C point nineteen. And nope, I'm on the wrong one. That was a they do have a waiver, yep, from seven point two C requirement to submit a site plan at a scale of one inch to equals forty feet. The plan is at a scale of one to thirty instead. Um, any comments or issues with that? Okay. Um, in terms of the special permit, any, so this is for use, Lori said warehouse. So I'm just pulling up the decision for a second here. Okay, so we're in the special permit, um, seven dash zero five dash zero three zero table of uses. Um, why don't we talk about the criteria? Any comments in general?
No, it seems like the proper place, it's a warehouse expansion in the industrial zone. Ordering two ninety. So it seems like it's an appropriate location.
Okay.
And they answered all the questions from staff, fire police, D P W, town engineer, planning director. So they covered all those bases.
Okay, so the board in reviewing the criteria for a special permit, um, Amy, you just spoke to the appropriate location for the use. Um, won't adversely affect the neighborhood. I don't think we heard any comments or concerns about that. Um, no serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Um, I think we did talk about the trucks and the weight exclusion on the bridge over there. And one of our conditions, I think, helps to address that in terms of the sign that we uh that's in the conditions. I don't think we really talked about any other hazards of vehicles. Um, does the current condition sort of address what our discussion was there?
I think so.
Okay. Um, substantial harmony with the master plan. Adequate and appropriate facilities provided for proper operation. I think that's covered. Um, any special requirements? I think that's covered. Does anyone on the board think this could be reasonably altered to reduce adverse impacts on the natural environment compatible with historic development, et cetera? Okay. Um, I do think when I first so we got, this has been a lot, we've had this in uh before us for a couple of times now. And at first there were, I did have a lot of questions, but I think that actually um staff did a great job pulling out um a lot of these questions and the applicant did a great job um addressing them, I thought. So any questions and things that I, I maybe were originally seeing, I think they did a nice job um complying with the planning board rules and regulations and making sure they had the right stuff submitted and um I thought, I thought that was a positive. I thought the plan came out nicely in the end. Um, any other thoughts or concerns on the special permit? No? Okay. Um, for the site plan criteria. So if we look at our site plan criteria for seven dash zero three zero five zero, um meets requirements of the bylaw. I won't read everything in full if everyone has their bylaws book open. Um, given location type, extent of the land, um, it couldn't be, this plan couldn't reasonably be altered to reduce clearing or gradient, grading on the site, reduce risk of groundwater contamination, et cetera. Um, improve pedestrian bicycle or vehicu- vehicular safety. Um, again, I think we addressed that in the comments. Improve access to each structure for fire and other emergency service equipment. I think we got a letter from the fire chief uh that said the plan was okay. Reduce visual intrusion. Achieve greater consistency with surrounding areas. Um, reduce glare from headlights. I don't think that was an issue there. Avoid removal or disruption of historic, traditional or significant structures, reduce obstruction of scenic views. And uh there are no variances, there are no variances on this plan, I don't think. In general. Any criteria that we don't feel was met as part of the site plan? No? Okay. I don't think so either. Doesn't Bill, Anthony, it doesn't seem like you do either. I think um they did, the applicant did a nice job making sure to meet all of this criteria and um we have a good plan before us. Any other comments for deliberation? Okay, so first I will entertain a motion to approve the applicant's request for a waiver from the planning board rules and regs section seven point two C. The requirement to submit a site plan at a scale of one inch equals forty feet. The plan is at a scale of one inch equals thirty feet. So move. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Carrie's an I. Um, with that waiver, I will then entertain a motion to grant the special permit and site plan approval for the property located at one hundred Barefoot Road in accordance with findings of fact, one through eleven and subject to conditions A through N.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hey, motions been made and seconded. I just wanna double check. A through N is accurate. And findings of fact, one through eleven. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to grant the special permit and site plan approval. All in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
I.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Carrie's an I. Okay, great. That's been granted and thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, Millie, you can come on back. I don't know if you have to bring Millie back. Oops. Um, Millie, there she is. Okay, and for the purpose of the minutes, um, Millie Milton has returned um to the meeting at eight oh seven. Okay, we have no more public hearings. So moved on, is that correct? We're moving on to all of new business. We have everybody back. Millie's back. Um, that was our last public hearing for the evening, so we'll move on to other business. Um, before we get down into our business, I wanted to um acknowledge the passing of Tony Abu, who is a developer in town, has been through, been before this board several times and um although we didn't always see eye to eye, he contributed quite a bit to the town in terms of his design and um just improving the appearance in a lot of locations in town. And certainly um our condolences to his family and friends. Um, moving along in the agenda, we have the um traffic memo to the Board of Selectmen. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at that? I think since we first had our forum, um, there was a discussion at the Board of Selectmen level to actually initiate a traffic committee in which there is a um, a planning board delegate. So that changed, number one, to change the letter. But number two, um, it sounds like we would then need to appoint somebody from the board. Is that correct Lori, that we should appoint somebody? I don't know, that's the point. Did the appointment's not on the agenda? So I don't know if that's something we have to put on the eighteenth?
I haven't received any uh guidance as to that uh from the town, in town administrators, so I, I'm not sure what the next step is. But I, I can reach out to him and um certainly uh put it on the next agenda on October eighteenth if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great. And just thought, is anybody necessarily interested in that role, um, depending on the process itself? No one would even be interested in traffic and safety?
Oh, I would be interested.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if you were asking or if you were telling that we could talk about it next.
Oh, no, I was just curious. So we don't have to deliberate or anything. I was just curious though, there was interest on the board. So that aside, we had a memo that just kind of captured what we heard from participants. I think um, it's great the traffic and safety committee was put into place. Um, there was other feedback submitted that night that that we had said we'd share with the board, so I just captured the other information. Did everyone have a chance to look and submit any revisions? Is that something that we feel comfortable sending?
I thought it looked good.
Yeah, it looked really good.
Okay, all right, so that's fine then to go. Um, next on the agenda is review of draft design guidelines for two family dwellings. Amy, would you wanna present that?
Sure, I can pull it up. Did everybody have a chance to read it or?
Yes.
I did.
Okay. So I'll bring them up. You have any PDF too, but I'll just share this one. I don't know where the PDF is, but it's the same thing. Um, did anybody have any changes to the design review guidelines?
I did not.
Mean I can go through it? Or I could just ask for changes? Pretty much at the beginning, we just stated the purpose, the definition of the two family. And then we went through the goals of why we were writing the guidelines.
Do you want, do you want like grammatical things or do you just?
Sure, you could, you could give any input.
Oh, yours is different than mine. Yours has corrections already on it. That's funny.
Hmm. I don't know.
Does yours have pictures, Millie, like this right here?
Yeah, it does, but a couple of places, the two family doesn't have the hyphen, but I think.
Yeah, it looks like we have the one from six thirty.
I probably do.
Yeah.
Well, no, it says September twenty twenty-two. But it might be just the way my printer printed stuff without, um, because yours is on a, um your, your two family ends at the end of a, a, a sentence and mine is, mine doesn't, but it's fine, it's fine. Couple of things, but it's fine.
So, well, if you have them, you could send them over and we could double check with what you have. You must have the PDF.
Yeah.
Okay. The version that I sent out today should have been the one that has September two thousand twenty-two draft on the top.
Oh, but you know what? This other page on mine has
You're right. It has a different date on every single page. One says April. Sorry about that. I didn't notice.
I'm like, wait a minute.
So I'll just pull this one up. I do think this might be the final. I don't know.
All right, well, either way, so this is, you guys have put a ton of work into this. Um, it's been a long time in the making. This bylaw went into place probably twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so we've been
Twenty eighteen, yeah.
Twenty eighteen, so this has been a long time in coming. It's very different from where it started. So is there anything you'd wanna speak to for like big differences? Because this is a significant improvement of where it was.
Well, the main difference was we took out a lot of the pictures, because a lot of the pictures at the beginning were more like Boston area and two families like where they were. It just, it didn't fit the suburbs. So a lot of pictures came out. And we just wordsmith through a lot of it. So it fit Northborough. I don't know, Lori, can you think of anything? Off the top of my head, we worked on it quite a bit, so nothing really stands out except for you know, we might have changed sections where there were ideas and I, I really can't think off the top of my head other than the pictures, but we did really, we wordsmith a lot.
Yeah, we did add a couple of new sections. We added a landscaping section as well as exterior lighting. Um, and, and like, um, Um, and, and like um, Amy said, we did do quite a bit of wordsmithing, so. Quite a bit of it has changed from what you saw originally.
Yeah. We just really. Framed it towards Northborough. But it wasn't anything major. I don't think. But there were a lot of good ideas. I don't know. But as long as everybody had a chance to read it. And if you do see. Any changes, like there were grammatical errors and you wanna email them to Lori. We could still make a change.
I mean, just a couple of things that I think were minor. I think you actually passed one when you were scrolling through. That it would just be easy to correct, but.
Do you want me to?
No, no, that's okay. I just, I think it's fine. If there's, I had no issues. I think this is great. What would we do for next steps with this? Is this, do we need a board vote? Eh, or how do we make this official at this point?
Yes, if you could vote to adopt the design guidelines. That would be great.
Okay, is the board um, after review and. And, and obviously, I will assume obviously, for some reason, we didn't wanna, we could re, we could amend these in the future if need be, so.
Yes, these are easily amendable. It doesn't have to go to town meeting.
Okay. So unless there's any further discussion, is there a motion to accept the two family guidelines?
Actually, before you do that, sorry, there was one pair, one sentence I wanted to amend unless it makes sense to everybody.
Oh, there it is, um.
Oh.
Visibility, see that?
Visibility.
That was a word from Judy Barrett, but.
Was that a real word?
I don't know, but we could write access.
I get it. It wasn't visibility. It is visitability.
Yeah. Yep, and Judy Barrett had put it in there, but I don't know if it's a word. I never looked it up. But it, we could change it to access. If visitability.
Yeah, access is much better.
Yep. My um, change, and I, I'd probably wanna run it by design review. Is, we went back and forth with. We don't, you know, one thing in Northborough is you didn't want large expanses of impervious surfaces. So some driveways were twenty feet wide, unless the driveway was super long and set back. We thought the driveways could start off smaller at the end of the driveway and then just get wide as you get closer to the house. Where you were parking your cars. But it says driveways shall not exceed twenty feet in width.
Well, uh, I mean, I do understand why you want a bit of a wider driveway if you've got two families driving in and out.
Yep.
You know, you're gonna have people coming in and out of, of a driveway at the same time, so I almost think having it wider at the end of the driveway and less wide. On the length is.
This is something we really went back and forth with, but maybe I should just leave it this way, because this is what we come up with, we came up with, but. I just thought maybe the first sentence in the, I thought we should break up this first sentence into two sentences, because driveways. Shall not exceed twenty feet in width unless. Two family homes are set back a significant different. Distance from the roadway. We meant if they were set back, it would actually be smaller, and the way I'm reading it. The way it says shall not exceed twenty feet unless makes it seem like maybe it should be bigger. But it does say narrow driveway. I don't know, maybe I should just leave it the way it is. Does a sentence make sense?
Well, it does, but I mean, obviously it leads, it lends itself to um. Perspective and opinion interpretation with a narrower driveway, a narrower from the beginning to the middle or narrower. At the end, it just. I think I know what you're trying to do, but I'm not sure, you know. Narrower from where?
We had pictures. There are a couple duplexes in town where they're wider than twenty feet. And they're close to the road, so the whole front yard was paved. And that's what we're trying to avoid, but there were also some duplexes that were further away from the road. So they were narrower and they're more landscaping out in front. And then it got wider when you got in front of the garage, so you could park in front of the garage.
It's just tricky, because I do think you have more cars going in and out, possibly at the same time with, when you have two families that. I, I don't know that narrower at the end is, is, is having something that, that kinda opens up at the end. So you can get somebody coming in and somebody going out at the same time.
Hmm, and the driveways we had though, where there was one on each side, so we had the garages.
Yeah, I like those actually.
Separate, so then there were two driveways, one on each home. I guess I should leave it.
Oh, so when you say large expanses of impervious surfaces are strongly discouraged, are you talking about continuous expanses? Like one big large driveway versus two?
Some of the examples we had that we didn't want to use had the whole front yard was a driveway.
So that's continuous.
So that was um, large expanses and pervious surfaces.
Okay.
I don't know. I guess I should leave it. I shouldn't have brought it up, but.
Well, I actually did look at that and was wondering how you really meant to, to clarify that, but it's not really, it's. You know, it's just, it's, it's design review, it's not. It's, it's not site plan.
Right, it's definitely guidance and it's on a case by case.
Yeah.
Basis, depending on the site, depending on the duplex.
Yeah.
We were just trying to stay away from paving the whole front yard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're leaving as is?
I guess so. Not to confuse everybody.
Okay, so then is there a motion to accept the design guidelines for two family dwellings?
I make a motion to accept the design guidelines for two family dwelling.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
I.
Amy?
I.
Millie?
I.
Anthony?
I.
Carrie's an I. So that's great. Thank you for your work on that. I know.
Yeah, thank you.
Long time. Um, any discussion this evening for zoning by law amendments or not this evening?
I did add an existing, uh, another zoning by law change, but I thought that we could discuss those at October eighteenth.
Okay, great. Um, anything for master plan? The next meeting's October twentieth.
There was a site walk last week. Uh, Millie and I both couldn't attend, but Lori was there. And the consultants were in town. And they walked the downtown and maybe Lori, do you have a little update on it?
Sure, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I think that it went really well. There were quite a few members of the consultant team that attended the walk. And I believe there were maybe five people from the committee, as well as the chair of the Board of Selectmen that attended. Um, there was a lot of uh, vibrant discussion back and forth, some ideas thrown around. About uh, potential reuse of certain areas and so. I, I think it was really helpful for everybody who attended uh, to do the site walk. And I did actually, just before this meeting, receive the results of the downtown survey. And I believe there were a total of five hundred and one responses, so that was pretty good. Um, and they did uh, provide some analysis, but I didn't have the time to really go through it as of yet.
And it's still open, right? Until November?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I can't really remember exactly what the deadline, actually, I might have even put it on here. Uh, no, I did not.
I still have to do mine, but um, for anybody watching, I think it was still open to like November fifteenth.
Yep, it is.
Okay.
So definitely, uh, please get your responses in. The more responses we have, the better quality the output will be, so. Definitely wanna hear your thoughts.
That's great. Um, okay, we have the A and R for seventy-five Ridge Road. Do you want me to bring that up or Lori, did you wanna speak to that at all?
Uh, there was just one issue with the A and R that I already spoke with uh, the engineer about. And uh, this was something that Fred brought to my attention. So one of the conditions of approval for seventy-five Ridge Road. Was that they uh, mark the easement corners with concrete bounds. But unfortunately, they mark them with iron pins. Um, so the lot corners were also marked with iron pins and we had wanted to differentiate between the easement. Boundary and the lot boundary. Um, so we asked them to modify the plan so that it would conform to the decision. And show the easement in the concrete bounds, so they agreed to do that. So we expect a revised A and R uh, tomorrow morning. So what I would ask is that uh, when you make your motion. If you could uh, just mention the modification of the uh, easement. Boundary, bounds to concrete bounds instead of iron pins. And then, of course, we will verify that that is um, done correctly before we'll have you come and sign the my law.
So then this would no longer be last revised on July nineteenth. Would it have a new revision date?
You know, just to make it uh, less confusing, I asked them to use uh, the original. Um, revision date as referenced in this motion. Cause I, I wanted to make sure that the uh, meeting minutes reflected the proper date.
Okay, so the motion would be for, to endorse the plan, but with the modification of concrete rounds versus the iron pins?
Yes, con- concrete bounds.
Bound, around, okay.
I say so much.
Well, any question? Did you, everybody just being, I don't wanna bring it up or any other questions? Obviously, the frontage is not a problem.
I didn't have any questions.
Okay. Okay then, is there a motion to endorse the A and R plan for seventy-five Ridge Road dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-two? Last revised July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by the Moore and Cameron Group Incorporated. With the modification of concrete bounds versus iron pins.
Someone.
Second. Second. All in favor, Amy?
I.
Bill?
I.
Anthony?
I.
Millie?
I.
Carrie's an I. Okay, so A and R is all set, and I guess, I mean, we must have limited time. I assume they'll get that in quickly enough for us to turn it around about a gentleman.
Absolutely. I'll let you know when it's ready to go.
Okay, great. Um, then we have the performance guarantee release for four fifty-four and four sixty-nine Whitney Street.
So this is the one that was on the agenda last time and I forgot about. So we got an updated uh, interest amount, so uh, as of uh, September thirtieth. Um, the total was six thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. I doubt that there is any accumulation of interest over the last uh, four days, but just in case there is. I included plus interest in the draft motion.
Okay, any questions on this one?
Sounds good.
Is there a motion to release the cash performance guarantee in the amount of six thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents? Plus interest, Yvonne Development Limited for four fifty-four and four sixty-nine Whitney Street. The performance guarantee was associated with an earth removal permit.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
I.
Amy?
I.
Anthony?
I.
Millie?
I.
Carrie's an I. Okay, so that's resolved. Um, next planning board meeting, October eighteenth. Sounds like we have some bylaws to talk about at that time. And, and anything else? No, no public hearings?
Um, no, that's all I have on the agenda for October eighteenth at this point.
Okay, um, next CBA meeting, the twenty-fifth. Anything of interest there?
Yes, we do have a public hearing on October twenty-fifth for a use variance. Um, so for this particular property, which is eighty West Main Street. Uh, the applicant is interested in getting approval for a single family home. On a property that currently contains a three-family home.
In addition to, or?
Correct. So historically, they did have a small unit of about five hundred square feet. Uh, that was built, uh, I believe in nineteen eighty-four. Um, and that building became inhabitable in two thousand eight. I understand that there was a fire. Um, so it lost its grandfathering status. So originally, they had submitted an application hoping that it would be a special permit. Um, to expand a non-conforming use, uh, because like I said, the original footprint was about five hundred square feet. And they're interested in replacing that five hundred square foot structure. With a structure that's approximately one thousand six hundred square feet. So that would be a use variance.
And that's eighty West Main Street?
You know, I, I, um, Fred just sent me a text and corrected me. It's eighty Main Street, not.
Okay, that makes more sense. Wait a minute. All right, that makes more sense. Okay. Um.
So there's no site plan? It won't come in front of us for input or?
It is not something that would require planning board approval, um, because it's a variance. Uh, the site plan review would go through the CBA.
Okay, but usually when there's a site plan review, do we do, the planning board looks at it and does a technical review?
I'd be happy to send it along to you.
Sure.
Yeah.
The, there is a Northborough Dog Park Community Workshop at six P M on October eleventh. Anything to say about this one?
Yeah, so we hired Weston and Sampson to do a feasibility study, so um. Under the contract, they are analyzing up to five different municipal sites for possible dog parks. And at the community meeting on October eleventh, they are going to be going over uh, their findings. Uh, for the sites that they evaluated. And they will be collecting feedback from attendees on what sites uh, people think make the most sense. So if you have a dog and uh, you're interested in possibly having a dog park. Um, then please attend. This is going to be a Zoom meeting. And uh, we hope to have a dynamic discussion about dog park.
And will they release the properties in advance or it's just will be discussed on October eleventh? I'm just curious what part, properties.
Yeah, so uh, most of the properties are undeveloped land, so it's a little difficult uh, to, for me to describe. Um, however, I can tell you that one of the proposed sites is the senior center.
Hmm, that's interesting. For the dog park right at the senior center?
Yes, yes, I don't know how popular that'll be. Um, but there is, it's a very large parcel. Um, and so that was one of the locations uh, that was identified as feasible, possibly. Um, I don't, like I said, it may not be popular, in which case it would likely drop off. Um, but it's, it's one that folks thought would be worthy of discussion at least.
Okay. Um, and then complete, complete streets community input session is a board of selectmen meeting on October seventeenth. So anything on this?
This one is a little bit more up in the air. So originally, we were supposed to be on the October third agenda. Um, but because the Board of Selectmen meeting agenda was so packed, they moved us to the seventeenth. But I understand that last night's Board of Selectmen meeting got canceled, which means that the items that were on October third. Have been moved to October seventeenth, so I have to uh, double check with the town manager to ensure that. We are still on. So I have to, uh, double check with the town manager to ensure that we are still on for October seventeenth. If that changes, I will absolutely let you know.
Okay, great.
And we'll be doing a flyer similar to the dog park flyer. Um, so we'll be announcing far and wide if we are going forward with that date or another date.
Great. Okay, if there's no other business before the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.